Good evening, everyone. It's now 5:30 and I call to order the workshop of the Victoria City Council. Our workshops are informal, so that we'll just dive right in with that. We'll dive right into our agenda. There's one item on our agenda this evening, which is our, an update on our transportation projects. Presenting this evening is our city engineer, Kara Garin. Ms. Garin, welcome.
Hello, Mayor, members of the city council. We have two special guests with us here tonight.
Please introduce your special guest.
I'd like to just pretend and tell Darren he's doing the whole presentation, but that maybe would be a little mean. So with me tonight, Eric Johnson, he was here at the last workshop. He's the county's project manager for all of these Arboretum Area Transportation projects. And Darren, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, thank you, Kara. Darren Milkie, I'm a deputy county adjutor for Carver County Public Works. Lyndon Rogers couldn't make it tonight, so I just wanted to let you know that.
You're an awesome substitute. We will take it. Thank you, and welcome to Victoria, both of you. And with that, let's proceed.
All right, so I have a number of slides that I'm going to run through and also going to take a little bit of time to walk through the layouts for a couple of these projects in a little bit greater detail. Certainly, if you have questions along the way, it's a lot of material, so it might make more sense to stop me along the way. This is just a continuation from our last workshop. So on the 22nd, we talked about the projects highlighted here in red. So anybody who's interested in learning more about those projects, watching the last workshop would be a way to hear more about those. Tonight, we're going to be talking about Highway 5, which the Highway 5 project includes Rolling Acres Road and then 82nd Street, which is the extension of County Road 18. The city does have a website dedicated to these projects, so it's sort of like a clearinghouse where you can go and then you can click on all the detailed, get to the detailed project pages from one place. Kendra's done a nice job of pulling that together and having that information in one spot. So specifically, you saw this map last time. We carried around with us and handed out to people. But the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan projects are highlighted on this graphic. And tonight, we're going to be talking about the green project, so Highway 5, and then orange, which is 82nd Street. So the extension of County Road 18. So specifically related to the extension of County Road 18, so we're talking about the gravel portion of 82nd Street that runs behind the arboretum, improving that to a paved road with two 24-foot lanes and a shoulder, and then a trail along the north side of the road. The project includes construction of a roundabout at the intersection of Bavaria and County Road 18. So this project is fully funded, right? County and state funds. So that was, this was the project we had pursued state bonding money for and were successful in getting in conjunction with the county.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yep.
So I remember last year, right, there was an error in the bill that passed, and they were going to fix it this year. I'm assuming that's been done.
Well, the session just started, so Darren, you want to take that?
Mr. Milkie, please.
Thank you. I believe Lyndon Rogers has been working with our local legislatures to get that worked into a bill in the session starting off this year. So the intention is to correct this for construction costs as well.
Yeah, I don't think we anticipate any concern with getting that fixed, but...
Is there any problems with delay, though? Like if they don't take, if they don't get it done right away? Or is there, like if it waits till the...
Yeah, we'll want to keep an eye on that and stay in contact with our local legislators to help make sure that that doesn't become a problem. Most certainly. So construction for this project could start as early as fall of 2024 with just some, like tree removal, those sorts of things. So not full construction until 2025. There, there's a lot kind of going on on this project outside of the city of Victoria. So there's a lot of work going on between Chaska and Chanhassen and the arboretum and the county in terms of finalizing the specific layout. I'm not going to go through that because it's outside of the city of Victoria. But the city will be asked to approve a resolution of support of the project. And so really, you know, the part that's in Victoria is the roundabout and then the first part of 82nd Street. So the impacts within the city limits are pretty minor. We do have two property owners, though, that are within the project area. So these two parcels are within Victoria city limits. And on the regular, on the consent agenda tonight, the city's received a petition from these two property owners for us to study extending sanitary sewer and water service past their house at the same time as the roads being ripped up. Because it would be problematic to build a new county road and then come forward and say, hey, we want to connect to city water. So they approached me at a public meeting this past year, and we've been talking through what that might look like and what that might mean. But under the city's assessment policy, because there isn't municipal services there today, we requested that they complete a petition and submit that into us so we can kick off our formal process for studying that. So if that's approved tonight on the agenda, then I'll just be taking a look at what the cost would be to extend water. So city water is on the west side of Bavaria, so we'd be looking at what it would cost to bring a water main past their property to provide connections for them. The fire chief has also identified that it would be of value to the city to have a hydrant on the other side of Bavaria. So we'd be looking at that as part of that, too. Sanitary sewer is a little bit more complicated because there isn't sewer readily available to the area. But we would just be looking at our records and seeing what that might look like to extend utilities there. That'll help us understand what the costs are and help the property owners decide if this is, in fact, something that they're interested in. But we would want to, we'd want to be doing that work in conjunction with the road project instead of coming in after the fact.
Certainly. Can we take a minute and talk about this a little bit?
Sure.
Are there other properties that would benefit from water and sewer along this line or nearby this, as long as we've got the...
So really, everything to the east of here is Chaska, so that would be up for Chaska to decide. The city does have some parcels on the south side, on the east side of Bavaria, south of the project area. But those folks haven't approached the city with any interest to connect to sewer and water through the conversations we've had to date. So they're, we'll take a look at making sure we have a stub available should, should they request extension down the road, but they aren't tied to the road project. So certainly, if they, anybody outside of the current city limits, current service area can call if they're interested in those things. But when we did the trail project on Bavaria, we weren't getting a lot of questions about that from folks, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so then I'm going to go back to this map. So Bavaria Road between County Road 18 and Highway 5 is an interesting piece of the puzzle. So that road isn't planned for widening or any big improvements, but as the city knows, getting a trail connection has been a key priority for both the county and the city along Bavaria. With this, with the improvements that are happening on 5 and the trail going in along West 82nd Street, the project team has been continuing to pursue the possibility of obtaining funding to complete that trail connection along Bavaria. So in addition to that, the county is also taking a look primarily at the section between 78th and like Emerald Crest from a pavement preservation perspective. So with all this other project work happening in the area, do they want to complete a pavement project that would likely potentially look at adding a couple of turn lanes at some key intersections? And we're continuing to evaluate the opportunity to get funding to get that trail connection completed. So it remains something that we're talking about, and I would expect more will come on that once the county's gotten a little further in evaluating what they want to do there. But that, you know, it's a county-driven decision based on their roadway network.
Very good. Questions so far, council? Okay, see none. Carry on.
All right, so I'm going to clip through a couple of slides a little bit quickly and then come back in a little bit greater detail. So now, what you're seeing on this slide is the Rolling Acres Road improvements. And what I, what I wanted to just highlight relative to that project, what we heard loud and clear from the public during the public engagement process was a need to change the character of that corridor. So speeds are an issue, safety is an issue, two-lane, heavily traveled roadway. There wasn't a need identified to make it wider than two lanes, but what the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan landed on was a divided roadway with a median, wide enough to potentially do some landscaping and some other traffic calming improvements to help really change the character of that corridor and slow traffic down. Ped crossing improvements were also an important piece. So after I get through my Highway 5 slide, we'll come back to this one in more detail. For Highway 5, what we're talking about and have been talking about through the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan is an expansion to four lanes from Highway 41 to Commercial, essentially, so into Victoria. So that, really, everything for the most part remains unchanged from what the council supported in the resolution of support for the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan. I want to walk through the layout, though, a little bit tonight, just to get everybody back top of mind as to what, what the scope of the improvements are. Specifically for Highway 5, the city council will need to give municipal consent to the project. So you will need to take council action on it at some time, at some point in this year. So want to make sure you're getting the information that you'll need along the way to be comfortable when the time comes for that resolution. Okay, so I'm going to go to here. And so starting, starting back with Rolling Acres Road, so what you're seeing on the screen here, Highway 5 is running up and down the screen, and then north is to your right. So this is the intersection of Rolling Acres Road and 5, the Apple House. So the University of Minnesota Apple House is here on this corner. Everybody knows that the, the challenges are great with traffic and safety at the intersection. So what the, what the plan calls for is double left turn lanes, a through lane and a right turn lane for southbound traffic. That's where we see lots of backups in the morning on Rolling Acres, all the way up to 7. As you're looking at this picture, what I want to show you, what I want to highlight for you, though, is these red areas. So those are medians, and when they're red, it means they're concrete. When they're green, it means they're available for us to consider some level of landscaping improvements in there to help achieve the community's goals for traffic calming along the way.
Just a question on that. What is the, like the width of that median?
It, it really varies depending on what purpose it's serving. So, you know, here you're seeing a 17-foot wide median, partly because you have these two turn lanes coming in. Up here, is that an eight or a six? Eight? I can't see.
Six, yes.
That'll help. Yep, that'd be six.
Okay.
And then the other thing I just want to highlight here is pedestrian connections along all four corridors. So a really pretty great element of all of these improvements is we're really, if we're able to get fully funded, the amount of pedestrian and trail connections we're able to make through these projects for the community are really significant in terms of finally being able to provide multiple safe crossings to 5. So this trail already exists today. This, you're seeing a trail on the west side of Bavaria, consistent with what we talked about on the last page. So then continuing north on Rolling Acres Road, there's some access management happening. So that's a safety issue to reduce access points along the corridor to create less conflicts and make it more safe. The University of Minnesota and the Landscape Arboretum are part of the study and part of the project and working together on what those right access restrictions might look like. So then the next location, the intersection of Tamarack and Overlook Lane. So this, what we now have here, which is an enhancement from the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan, is a mini roundabout at this location. Through a value engineering process that I think we covered at a previous workshop, that team identified an opportunity to further achieve the goals of the corridor by having this additional roundabout in this location. And then also, it helps facilitate turning movements for some of the restricted access points along the corridor.
You mentioned mini roundabout, so what goes into, I'm assuming, how much traffic is on the road? The space available, like to determine, you know, if it's just one lane that goes around or if you have a second lane where you're able to turn off, and what, what all goes in to that?
Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. No, you're right. It's, the traffic volumes here don't need, don't warrant anything more than a single lane around the roundabout. Similar design to what we have at Interlochen, that you'll see here in a moment. So again, it's slower mini, smaller, slower speeds, fits the context of the corridor of what we're trying to do by design here, too. And like Kara said, we, we had, the old plan had just a typical intersection, but this makes U-turns much easier, too. But this should work very well with the traffic volumes today and the 2045.
So do we know with all the other roundabouts that we've talked about last meeting and this, are they, are we at the point where we know, are they probably going to be mini? Are they going to be the normals, you know, normal size or extra large?
This one's our only, this is our only mini. The other ones are all sized for the traffic today and/or to be expandable for the ultimate traffic for the area.
Just for, so I can get a picture of it, the, the roundabout at Pioneer Trail in Bavaria up from, is that, would that be classified as a mini? That has, because it was...
Looseless when I leave the city limits. Darren, that's a Darren question.
Yeah, I could maybe add.
Because they just did some, they updated it just this year.
We did some resurfacing on it. It had some rutting and wheel tracking going on, so that's what we fixed there.
Where, where is the location, Pioneer and what was the other?
It's Pioneer Trail in Bavaria, the one.
Oh, yes, okay.
Just past town course.
Yeah, so on each side of the railroad crossing, there's a roundabout, roundabout that's been there, I don't know, quite some time already, probably 15, 20 years already. So they do need some updates to the times. They're kind of one of the first ones. But I'll, I'll say just maybe by sheer diameter, it's maybe these fall into mini size. But this is, I guess, to me, bigger than that. These are going to be, look and view, be viewed as more of a regular, typical roundabout that you see around here. So I wouldn't get too hung up on the mini term. It's just more the diameter size. So this one in Interlochen, they're definitely on the smaller squeeze size, compact. And so they'll be able, you'll be able to drive them a little bit slower than you probably normally would with other ones. But that's probably the only real difference you're going to see.
Okay.
So they are, they are sized for truck turning movements, snowplow trucks, even bigger trucks. So, so you're going to be able to navigate them. It's just, they're, they're going to definitely feel smaller as you drive through these, at least these two in particular.
And really, that's by design to help achieve the community's goals of slowing traffic and changing the character of that corridor. So as we move north from there, you'll start to see an 18-foot wide median, and it's green. So that's signaling to us that that would be an opportunity for the city to look at doing some level of planting and other landscape type improvements in that area. As we start to move forward through the schedule, that's going to be something we'll be turning our attention to is what level of improvement do we want to make within the green spaces that are available to us? And that, you know, that conversation is going to vary depending on where it is. There's a financial element associated with that that will, at a future meeting, be walking through city staff and the council through how to make those decisions. A good example that I've been sharing with city staff that I've yet to drive myself, but what I understand from folks at the county is the work in Carver. So 11 South, the new highway improvements to County Road 11 in Carver Roundabout has some landscaping features in it. I noted this at the last workshop, but I've been suggesting to everyone that you, when you're driving around, you actually pay attention to those things so that you have something in your mind before we start talking about it. Certainly, maintenance is a component to that, so we'll want to be mindful about what the public works department's comfortable with in that regard. But for this corridor, you know, it's a pretty great opportunity to enhance our community character through some of these features. So as we come up to then the regional trail crossing, so we are pursuing funding for, are we overpass or underpass today? Underpass. At that location, we haven't secured that funding yet, but the project team's going to continue to pursue that with the goal that we can construct that with the project. If we can't, we would still then have an at-grade crossing with a median, but it'd be a much wider median and a much safer crossing than even exists today.
That's a lit crossing at this point, isn't it?
Yes, yep.
That kind of goes, so how, so when we're thinking about the future, right, when we have to decide on how things are going to look and such, how do we know, or for these medians, like which ones might hit, right? Like, so you look at Chaska right now, right, their medians all have big light posts. Do any of these, like, is there any lighting, like, going, like, light posts going down all these? Is it dependent on the area? How, how does...
Yeah, typically, at least out here, I wouldn't anticipate that we'd be lighting within a median for, just based on what the corridor is like. But yeah, that's, those are some of the things that we're going to have to work through, really on 5 up here and then even within the roundabouts, what do we want to do with them? And I, you know, the county has a lot of variety, I think, constructed now between what Chaska has done and lots to look at.
Is that space where I see three or four cars parked next to the trail going to go away? Or is that going to get eaten up by the expansion?
Yeah. So coming up to St. Moritz, so this does become a right-in, right-out only intersection with the median. Obviously, you can't drive through the median. And then as we continue up to Interlochen, so you're seeing one version of a roundabout here. There's a couple of different layouts in terms of what this roundabout actually looks like. So the one you're seeing here is showing only a, a right into the church and then their exit coming out where their current exit is. The county is working very closely with Mount Olivet to figure out what the right footprint is here. I think there's a meeting scheduled this week, next week. I don't know. They all run together.
Very soon.
Yeah, to go through a couple of different options with those folks to figure out what, what makes the most sense for here. But so again, if you're, if you're leaving from this part of the neighborhood, you would take a right and then you would go safely up to the roundabout, go around the roundabout to go back the other direction. And same with somebody leaving Mount Olivet, Rolling Acres, they would go right and they would come down to the roundabout at Tamarack, whoops, and make a U-turn to go back north. So, you know, in your travels, you're seeing a lot more of that type of configuration. And again, it's safety-driven. This project then ends just past the intersection of Interlochen. The portion of Rolling Acres Road north to Highway 7 is envisioned to occur when we're ready and have money to do intersection improvements up on 7. There's a corridor study getting underway on Highway 7 so that we can take a look at what makes the most sense for improvements along the whole corridor. We did look at that intersection really closely during the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan and have a preferred alternative for it, but we need to see how that fits in with the rest of the planned improvements for 7 itself. One other feature I just want to note is this plan is showing trail on the Swiss Mountain side of the road and sidewalk on the west side of the road. We've had some discussions at whether we think that sidewalk on the west side of the road makes sense or not. That's something that we'll be looking to get some public feedback in our next round of open houses to see if people are supportive of that. There's not much density through there, so, you know, that would be a city cost. So needing to try to decide if that makes a lot of sense or not. Any questions on Rolling Acres Road before I move over to 5?
Just at Rolling, at Rolling Acres, the facility. Are, just the only thing about the sidewalk, if that's going to continue to be used, is there a way for residents there to get across safely from where they're at?
Yeah, so that's one of the elements of continuing to have the sidewalk along that section would be to provide that access to the safe ped crossings at the roundabout. And then, you know, then they, then you get access to the regional trail through the other side of the street. So and certainly, those property owners will help us weigh in on what makes sense there.
Yeah, I mean, I get emails on this all the time, which is where I go to church. So just, I guess I'll email them and just say, do you want those here or do you want those with them?
Yeah. Did I forget anything?
No, other than we're coordinating, or we will shortly be coordinating with each individual property that's affected, of course, of where we need easement from. So there is planned coordination with folks directly as well.
Yeah, the team has already spent quite a bit of time with some property owners along the corridor that have more specific circumstances going on. All right. Okay, shifting gears now to Highway 5, and I'm going to start in downtown at Commercial. So a change from what was in the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan was the introduction of a roundabout at Commercial. The city council was a part of that discussion and decision over the last year. So now you're starting to see that reflected in the layout. What we're seeing there then, which we talked about at the time when we made that change, was that 80th Street would, you wouldn't be able to turn left out of 80th Street because, again, that would create a safety challenge. So folks leaving 80th Street that want to go westbound would need to go around the roundabout to go back the other direction. Part of why that change became something that was something we could entertain was the fact that the fire station's going to be getting relocated. So that had been a non-starter to have that access limited. But introducing the roundabout in this location really is giving us an opportunity to bookend downtown with the other roundabout that we talked about on the last council meeting. So really setting up that traffic calming, slowing folks down, and an opportunity, again, you're seeing green space here, so this is another opportunity for us to look at some level of aesthetic treatment, landscaping to try to help create that vision for the community. So then proceeding to the next kind of big area of change, this is consistent with, this isn't changed from what was in the plan that the council resolution supported back with the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan. But these access points are becoming right-in, right-out at 78th Street and at Steiger Lake Lane. So similarly, if you're coming out of Steiger Lake Lane and you want to go eastbound, you'll go up through the Commercial Roundabout to go eastbound. This is the location that the city applied and received funding for a pedestrian over. This is the location that the city applied and received funding for a pedestrian overpass. So that is in the project. It is funded to construct the overpass across 5, really to finally give us a grade-separated crossing for folks. Right now, we still see people run across these lanes of traffic, particularly in the summer when there's events going on downtown. Wonderful safety enhancement as part of that. And then with that, doing this also creates the opportunity for us to have a full signalized intersection at Park Cochia. So those two improvements really go hand in hand in terms of getting us to have enough traffic at Park Cochia to be able to meet warrants for a traffic signal. So this intersection would become signalized, it would have push-button pedestrian crossing, so signalized ped crossing, a lot better than the folks I talked to today who, especially now that Cochia is open all the way through, the people on the north side talk about running across Highway 5 in that location, which is a little terrifying to envision. But having that, having that crossing there safely and then having that tie into the regional trail will be a big, big opportunity for a safe connection. The counties, the MINDOT project is, the Highway 5 project is showing ending at Parkview, but the city will be taking a look at whether or not we want to further reconstruct that section of road. We've been kind of waiting to do anything with it till we knew what was happening here and taking a look at what that trail connection, condition of the trail connection is today and whether we want to make any enhancements to improve that through there. If you, if you're up there at all, there's some bad drainage problems too that we need to, we need to take care of. So then continuing to the east, so you'll see, this is one of our trails to nowhere that we have running behind the Parkview neighborhood. So that trail would get reconstructed. And then one of our early wins on the project is a pedestrian underpass from the Madeline Creek Park over to the north side of Highway 5. So underpass trail connection, again, another opportunity than to get to the regional trail without having to run across Highway 5. And what did you say today, Mayor, play Frogger?
Oh, yeah.
And then that trail would also continue along the north side of 5 up to the Rolling Acres Road intersection. So Kendra's going to help prepare a graphic that starts to show all of these connections in a way that only Kendra can do that helps highlight some of those opportunities that are created by creating those connections. I was looking at those loop maps that the trail naming group had worked on and that these connections with what we talked about at the last meeting and this project really are a game changer in terms of being able to give large sections of the community better access to the trail system. Red, you're seeing red, that's a median, so still median all the way along Highway 5. We're not proposing to landscape the median on Highway 5 for obvious reasons through this part of the corridor anyway. So then as we continue on to the east, you're seeing some more access restrictions that the team's working on with the arboretum. Trail's still on the north side of the road. We aren't proposing a trail along the south side of Highway 5 because of the impacts to the arboretum. We really, as a group, felt that capitalizing on the investment that was already made on the north side and the connectivity that we have there makes more sense than potentially impacting the very valuable research that's happening on the south side of Highway 5 for MINDOT, or for the arboretum. And then the intersection with Minnewash to Parkway, that's not changed significantly from what was in the study. There already is an underpass that the trail system would tie into that has been completed previously. So one area of really pretty significant work that's been happening over the past few months relates to the section with water on either side of it. So the project team has done a lot of work. I've been in a lot of technical meetings with matrices with a million different options for what the most cost-effective way to widen Highway 5 through that location. The study had a land bridge, so highest-cost solution in it. Through the value engineering process and through all the hard work of the team, they've really looked to minimize the span of the bridge as well as the cost. So either one of these guys could talk in detail about that if folks are interested in that, but they're really looking to balance cost versus environmental impacts. With that change, we also had the city of Chanhassen issued a building permit for an existing parcel out there, so that certainly needed to be taken into consideration, the cost of acquiring that property. If you were to have a bridge, they wouldn't be able to have access to the bridge, so the team's been working through that in lots of technical detail.
So I understand that, that land bridge and this idea that you guys have value engineered this and have another idea that was proposed to MINDOT. Are we still waiting to hear from MINDOT if that's an acceptable thing to them or where is that?
Wants to take that.
No, we've been work, we've been working together on that since last summer. So they've been at the table, lots of ideas, because they're going to ultimately own and maintain this as well. Technically, we don't have to build a bridge at all, but that, that's part of the, there has been a commitment to connect the wetlands. It will also provide wildlife crossings, and there's a lot of sensitive resources here. So we've landed on this, but, but no, we do have support. This is, we've gotten here as a team.
Okay, thank you.
So then the, the last thing, and I don't, I don't have that graphic pulled up for you, is what happens at the intersection of 5 and 41.
Do you want to just talk about that from a high-level perspective?
At a very high level, regardless of what we build, we're going to make it work well now and into the future. What, where the study landed, it was called the displaced left, so it's a non-conventional intersection in Minnesota. It would be the first of its kind in Minnesota. They're out east, they're out west. But really, some of the benefits there were we just make the operations run better with less phases of the signal, so more green time to carry people through. We're working with MINDOT very closely on that, but we have a backup plan to just make this an intersection that looks perhaps a lot closer to what you just saw at Rolling Acres Road with some dual left-turn lanes. There we, but we'd also have dual through lanes as well, or south. So just a big signal or an innovative type of intersection. But again, we want to make sure we fix that problem, because if we don't fix that intersection, we'll create other, there'll be other cut-through patterns that would develop as people avoid it. So hopefully in the next, hopefully this month, we get, we, we come to consensus on what we're going to build there.
Would you expound on the alternate left? Is this something that's akin to the, what is, I don't know, slang vernacular of a Michigan left where, if anybody's traveled through Michigan, they, the traffic go through the intersection, almost do a U-turn, and then that effectively becomes the left turn, and then you turn right to, is that what's, an idea that's being floated or help, help describe that if you would?
It's right here. It is, it's different than that. It is on, it is hard to see on this slide too.
Where did it, where did I put it? And they have a, they have a super cool little video too that I can show that has what the cars look like. Can't make that bigger. You can see that.
So, so as you approach, like, if you're going east, as you approach Highway 41 where Kara has her cursor, there's a signal. So it's three signals, they operate as one. If you're going to make a left, you make your left turn there and cross oncoming traffic, and then you store at, at the intersection. So when the light at 41 and 5 is green, all the lefts, all the throughs, all the rights, they all go at the same time and they don't conflict. So we, you separate folks out in advance.
Is it kind of like shock me, like at the 169, 41, right? I think I'm right on that.
Diverging diamond.
Yeah.
What, what did you call it?
That's called a diverging diamond, so that's where you turn lefts into rights. This was maybe a similar type of idea where you're, you're, you're changing, you're changing your conflicts, your moves, but, but it's different than that too. This would be the first of its kind probably in the Midwest.
Are we ready for that?
It sounds like we are not, based off of all the coordination to date with the state. Again, they're going to have to own and operate this. But the beauty of it is, we can move traffic very efficiently without widening 41. If we build the other option, 41's 44 feet wider for similar benefits, so.
Higher cost.
Yeah, and higher cost.
Greater impact.
So, but, but right, I don't think we're ready for it yet.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just looking out for Kara and Darren here. They don't need people on the phone yelling at them going, I have no idea how to, how to go where I need to go in this.
Technically in Chanhassen, so I'd be telling them, oh.
All that, all that engineer.
We had a similar thing with roundabouts and the diverging diamond and, and the R-cuts that have all shown up, like, anything different is a threat at first, but we, we figure them out. And I, I think someday we'll figure this out too, but perhaps not with this project.
Yeah. So I could flip back to the layout, but any questions about what's the scope of the 5 project? Send me to move on to.
Kara, I apologize, I think I may have missed it. Is there still the, closer to, back to downtown, kind of where 78th comes into 5, is there still an overpass that's planned for there or?
Yeah, so at 78th and 5.
A pedestrian overpass.
Pedestrian overpass, yeah.
But then, what I think we've seen here is an underpass for pedestrians in between Rolling Acres and this pedestrian overpass, correct?
Correct, yeah, so at the Madeline Creek Park. So be pretty cool.
Similar to the one by Minnewash to Parkway.
Yeah.
Right, that type of underpass.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, council, comfortable?
Layout questions.
All right.
Move it on to whatever next. Okay, I'm not walking through this project schedule, I'm only showing it to say that the project schedule is extremely complicated and I'm pretty convinced that Eric and then the project manager are going to have aged like five years in the next two years as they try to keep track of the schedule. One thing we did want to highlight related to schedule is really the environmental documentation. So this is a federal project, the city of Victoria hasn't been a part of a federal project, there's, and it's a huge project, so there's a lot of other elements included beyond just, you know, typically on our projects, we're dealing with wetland impacts, wetland delineations, things of that nature, but I'm starting to learn things about bats and the, what's the bee?
Rusty patch bumblebee.
Yeah. Do you want to talk about the rusty bat, patch bumblebee a little bit?
Yeah, the, this.
Johnson, please.
All right, this, this whole area around here is considered a, it's, it's got this higher designation for the habitat of rusty patch bumblebee. It's, it's a more recent addition to the endanger, it's an endangered species.
So we actually have them or we just have the proper environment that they can live in?
I think it's been determined we have them. And with the coordination that's happened today with US Fish and Wildlife Service and MINDOT, it seems they're going to, they've determined we're going to have an adverse effect on these, on the rusty patch bumblebee with the Highway 5 project. So we're working through that, that would be the first project. Again, they're a newer addition to the list, but that, this is the first time a project would have that finding adverse effect. So I don't know that the industry's totally figured out what, what to do with that yet. We have been coordinating with the University of Minnesota and Arboretum, and you know they have a bee center right, right by the farm.
Great resource. I was going to say, we are in the best place in the world.
Yeah.
To have a rusty patch bumblebee.
So they offered this afternoon too to help us out, to get their experts involved and to help work with the, the agencies on this. It also is a risk to the schedule you see because the, the US Fish and Wildlife Service is apparently quite backed up. And so when they say they can get to this, to do the formal consultation, is to the right of what's on screen here. So that does not align for them to engage with us to, to work through the project and what we, how we mitigate this, because with the funds we have, we have a target of April 1st to have everything in for approval so we can award it to a contractor this summer of 2025. So we need to work through that and try and advance that coordination to align with everything else that's happening in the project, but it's certainly a risk that could, could delay the project.
But they're working hard on it.
I have every confidence that we will come out.
The other thing, the other environmental work that has started is just the noise wall analysis, so I know we, the project team's still been getting questions here or there from folks who are interested in that and that, that will come next. So in terms of schedule, we had talked about possibly having another open house soonish, but really the project teams concluded that we need to get the layout a little bit further along so that we're confident that what we're showing is what we expect to be built, but we also need to be able to get to work on staging. So at the last open house and really in my interactions in between, the most questions I'm getting asked are, when will the road be closed, where will it be closed, how long will it be closed? And we, we think it would be best to not have a whole big, like, the big open house at the arboretum again until we have some of those answers. In the meantime, we will continue to do our public engagement. A blog post went out today by Kendra, she'll push that out to social media, providing updates, and then we're going to plug in at all of the summer events, like we did last year. It seemed like a, a good opportunity to get the word out to folks that these projects are coming. Funding, in the spirit of time, I'm not going to spend a bunch of time on funding. Eric spends his whole life working on funding for this project. We're sitting at 74% funded as of today, and this is an update on, on funds that have been applied for, green successful, strike through not successful, but Eric remains confident that there is more pursuits to be chased.
Yep, lots of things we're actively working on, green are submitted, what's on here. We're working on the raise right now, due later this month, and there's multiple more federal funding opportunities this summer. So this is our, our last shot, and there's multiple paths here to fill that $30 million void, so hopefully we hit that this summer.
The mayor participated in an interview today for a video that'll accompany the next round of funding applications for this one, the, the raise one due to 28th, so a quick turnaround.
So I think you said before, right, like, if, if you get fully funded, you would, like the, you would, we would like to do as much of it at once, right, so that you're not shutting things down multiple times and such. Does that mean, like, if at certain point we don't get to that funding, you would then just choose which parts we move forward with, first, second, third, whatever?
Yeah, they're, they're really optimistic about us getting to close the gap, but certainly if pieces of funding don't come in, we'll have to determine what gets scaled back based on which funding we get too, because, you know, some of the funding is specific to a particular aspect of the project.
So I, I gotta take the opportunity here to just send kudos out to the group that has been working on the funding on this. This project is decades ahead of where we thought it was going to be, decades. And a lot of that is because of the hard work from the county and the engineering people who are piecemealing this project together with money and, and resources and just, it's been amazing, so kudos to them, shake their hand when you see them, they have done amazing work and I trust they will continue to do so, but it is decades earlier than we thought it was going to be.
So with that, we just had a couple of discussion topics for you, if you don't have any other questions, just curious if you have any reaction to the information you've seen today to help us kind of frame things to. to the information you've seen today to help us kind of frame things to think about in the future.
All right, council, questions or comments for the engineering team?
I was just curious how, like, you talked about Eighty-Second Street, right? So I think you said preliminary stuff with this fall potential, right? Like the clearing type stuff and then actual starting in the spring. How long does a project like that usually take? And then, I'm assuming it would, we've talked multiple times, right? Like that has to be done before anything on five starts, right? To have that alternate route.
Yeah, the, the plan is 2025. By the, by the end of that construction season, Eighty-Second Street, Casai eighteen, that would be done and open substantially complete.
Same with downtown west, with the project we talked about. The last workshop, we want to try to get that done in advance of the rest of the five project. It really, it is a puzzle that Darren and Lyndon throughout the whole county are working on, trying to, so the funding, depending on where the funding comes from, you have funding limitations of when you can start to spend it, when it needs to be spent by. And they're certainly mindful of the fact that even what you're seeing on this map isn't all of the projects that are planned in the county. So trying to figure out what the right puzzle pieces look like so that we aren't all really pulling our hairs out with construction.
Appreciate that, and constituency appreciates that.
Yeah, it's still going to be a challenge. I think people should be, you know, preparing themselves for the challenge that is construction. But, you know, what you're seeing on green, we're not anticipating that that's all going to be under construction along all of those areas all at once and really figuring out that staging of when does Rolling Acres Road happen compared to the work on five and the different sections on five. Example, the roundabout at Commercial and the impacts at Eightieth Street. We do need the fire station to be moved, and that process is ongoing and underway. So I'm working to figure that all out.
I was also just curious, you had mentioned the house that's being built. So obviously that's Chan, right? But so like, did they have to, I'm assuming they had to either talk to MINDOT or like, were they involved with this, like, to say, like, this isn't going to totally screw up this project? I mean, it, it just seems odd to me, but obviously it was approved.
Yeah, it was a challenge for both MINDOT and Chanhassen to work through. It was a lot of record, so they have certain property rights. There, you know, there was some effort made to purchase the property, but there wasn't concurrence on what the value of that was between what the property owner wanted and what the project could afford. So, yeah, it's been a challenge that I was happy it was.
Not.
Not in Victoria.
All right. All right, council, any other final thoughts? Kara, do you need anything from council?
No, I'll just.
Just informational?
The same thing that I did last time, there's a lot happening. So if you, if you have follow-up questions, certainly reach out to Dana or myself, and we'll help get those answers and keep things moving.
A thank you to you, thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Milky, thank you for all your help and support on this project. All right, with that, there are no more items to come before the body this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, we stand adjourned. We will reconvene.